One minute to air, thirty seconds to stream.
Recording in progress. Recording stopped. Recording in progress.
Happy New Year, happy New Year to each one of you. Welcome to our city council meeting here in Durham, North Carolina on the first Tuesday of January twenty twenty-three, here at seven o'clock at one-on-one City Hall Plaza. We welcome those who are joining us in chambers, and we're glad to see you all this evening. We have special guests from, from one of our Zimbabwe, from one of our council families, and we're happy to see them in the audience as well as everybody on the internet this evening. We are going to have a moment of silent meditation before we begin. Thank you all so much for that. I now turn my attention to Councilwoman Deidre Honor Freeman, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. It's our practice to stand and salute the flag if you'll join us.
Madam Clerk, if you will call the robe.
Mayor O'Neill.
I am present.
Mayor Protem Middleton.
I'm here.
Councilmember Javier Caballeros requested an excused absence, and it's been voted on. Councilmember Freeman.
Present.
Councilmember Halsey Hyman.
Present.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
And Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you all, thank you. We will now turn to our ceremonial items for this evening, and we have three, and I will start off with our virtue for January, which is courage, and that will be followed by two mentoring proclamations. If you've noticed, we have started doing a virtue, I think for the last eight to ten months, maybe not my entire tenure, but I thought it was important that we start to recognize and promote values that we can all claim and hope to aspire to, and I'm particularly excited about leading January with this virtue, which is courage, courage. Whereas our daily lives are filled with information regarding inequity, disaster, violence, and discrimination, often causing feelings of fear, uncertainty, self-doubt, and whereas the many daily acts of persistence, moments of tenacity, and shared determination of when community members go unnoticed and not celebrated, and whereas by recognizing the need for courage to try new things and resolve to overcome obstacles, all members of our community will be made aware of this, of the importance, and whereas the purpose of Courage Month is to remember that while experiencing times of adversity, during moments of uncertainty, after natural disasters and acts of violence, we remain committed to our greatness and the powerfulness of our community. Whereas when we remain firm in our purpose, it conceptualizes hard times as just a season that will pass, whereas we are all extraordinary, and our different paths allow us to show our strength and courage in numerous ways. Whereas we should be resilient with our passions, show our determinedness to be better during our day-to-day activities, and be courageous and authentic to ourselves, so we are striving for greatness and creating opportunities that enable Durham to be a welcoming, inclusive, kind, safer, and more secure place to live, work, and play. And whereas the city of Durham honors those who positively impact our community and our world regardless of age, now therefore I, Elaine M. O'Neill, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim the month of January twenty twenty-three as Courage Month, Courage Month, in Durham, and hereby urge all residents to participate in extending grace, practicing patience, spreading kindness and respect, generosity, and consideration of others at all time. Witness my hand and the corporate seal of the City of Durham this today, the third day of January twenty twenty-three.
Good evening, everyone. All right, something very personal here and passionate that I am about, mentoring. I will have Mr. Derrick Rhodes to join me. All right. This is our proclamation to you. Whereas January is National Mentoring Month, an annual campaign to recruit quality members to provide additional networks of support for young people, and whereas Durham, North Carolina recognizes the contributions of volunteer mentors who guide young people to success in their education, career, and well-being, and whereas mentoring provides... Mentoring programs like Durham Success Summit make our state and communities stronger by enabling impactful relationships that increase social capital for young people and provide invaluable support networks, and whereas throughout the COVID-19 pandemic, mentoring programs have stepped up to ensure that mentoring relationships continued virtually while also connecting families to critical resources and services. And whereas mentors can help young people explore careers and build skills to achieve higher lifetime economic outcomes through activities like helping them set career goals, write a resume, practice for an interview, connecting them to opportunities, and more. And whereas research has demonstrated that mentoring programs have a significant positive impact on a variety of academic achievement measures, including truancy and absenteeism, scholastic efficacy and engagement, school-related misconduct, and peer support, and whereas mentoring can be an especially effective prevention and intervention strategy for young people with marginalized identities such as youth with disabilities, BIPOC youth, LGBTQIA+ youth, and youth with experiences in foster care. And whereas quality mentoring promotes healthy relationships and communication, positive self-esteem, emotional well-being, and relationship growth for young people. And whereas with a mentor, youth facing risks are more likely to enroll in college, less likely to start using drugs, and more likely to volunteer regularly in their communities. And whereas while one in three young people still grow up without a mentor, demonstrating the need for additional awareness and resources for mentoring programs, and whereas National Mentoring Month is the time of the year, time of year to celebrate, elevate, and encourage mentoring across our state and recruit caring adult mentors in Durham. Now therefore I, Elaine M. O'Neill, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim January twenty twenty-three as National Mentoring Month in the city of Durham, and hereby urge all residents to observe the month. Witness my hand and the corporate seal of the City of Durham, North Carolina, this third day of January twenty twenty-two. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Councilman Williams. Young black men across the country have historically been underestimated and stigmatized, especially when it comes to their employability. That is why it's more critical than ever that mentorship and organizations beyond Durham Success Summit, like many of those represented here today, have a place in this community and are supported by community leaders like many of whom are in this room. According to the Labor Bureau statistics, young black men have two times the unemployment rate of white men. In December twenty twenty, that number was fifty-seven percent. Fifty-seven percent of black men between sixteen through twenty-four were unemployed. Nationally, we're seeing that trend hit right around fifty percent. But with effective mentorship, as Councilman Williams mentioned, we know that intervention can exist, and we want to see that happen right here in Durham. So thank you to city council, thank you to community leaders and other mentoring agencies who are here today for all the work that you do in the community and for helping others understand the value that it has in the lives of young people. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My thanks to Her Honor, the mayor, for allowing me to read this very special proclamation, the proclamation for National Mentoring Month, the declaration here in Durham. I'm going to ask Mr. Doran Langley, who will be receiving this proclamation, to join me, and after the reading of the proclamation, if he'd care to have a few words with us. Proclamation. Whereas created in two thousand and two by the Harvard School of Public Health and Mentor, the National Mentoring Partnership, January is National Mentoring Month, an annual campaign to focus attention on the need for quality, consistent, and competent mentors. And whereas the goals of National Mentoring Month are to raise awareness of mentoring, recruit mentors, equip mentors with the skills needed to support youth, encourage organizations to engage and integrate quality mentoring into their efforts with a focus on mental wellness, academic support, life skills training, and career readiness, workforce preparation, to motivate youth to excel. And whereas a mentor is a caring, dependable, and authentic person that provides support, guidance, advice, assistance, and devotes time to a young person to help youth discover personal strength, to persevere and achieve their potential through a structured and trusting relationship on a regular basis. And whereas quality mentoring encourages and empowers youth to make positive choices, promotes self-esteem and character development, supports academic achievement, social, emotional learning, leadership, and professional development, college readiness, and career exploration. And whereas the city of Durham strategic plan goals include shared economic prosperity and creating a safe community together, and whereas the city of Durham supports community-based mentoring programs as key community partners to support youth and their families. And whereas National Mentoring Month is the time of year to celebrate, elevate, and encourage mentoring and recruit caring adult mentors in the city of Durham, now therefore I, Elaine M. O'Neill, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim January twenty twenty-three as National Mentoring Month in the city of Durham, and hereby call upon public officials, business and community leaders, and educators to encourage all citizens to observe this month with appropriate ceremonies, activities, and programs. Witness my hand and the corporate seal of the City of Durham, North Carolina, this, the third day of January twenty twenty-three. Elaine M. O'Neill, Mayor of the City of Durham. Mr. Doran.
Before I give remarks, I would like a few other organizations to join who are partners in this proclamation, and they're going to give remarks before I do.
Good evening, everyone, mayor and fellow members. My name is Larry Campbell. I am chairman of the Board of the Thomas Mentor Leadership Academy. We mentor young boys between the ages of nine and eighteen who've been raised by their single parent, their living guardian, or their grandparents. We provide them purpose, motivation, and direction. I would like to say we currently have four young men to graduate from our program this year. One went to East Carolina University, one went to North Carolina Central University, and we have two in the Durham Community College. So I'm proud of the program, and I would like for your continued support, and thank you again, ma'am, for recognizing mentoring as an important piece of our country. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Denise Burgos, and...
Good afternoon, uh, good evening. My name is Allison Perez.
We work for the program, The Youth Leadership in Action from El Centro Hispano. We work to strengthen the community, advocate for the equity and the inclusion. Thank you so much for having us here.
Good evening. My name is Greer Webb, and I'm a current senior student at the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill and the current chief of staff at Sidekicks Academy of Durham. On behalf of our founder, grandmaster Freddie McNeil, and our entire team at Sidekicks, we'd like to say thank you for supporting our mission and motto at Sidekicks, which is to shift students of color from the school-to-prison pipeline to pipelines of safety and success. Thank you all.
Good evening. My name is Bree Elsie. I'm the executive director of Inspiring Minds. We're an after-school and summer program for underserved high school students. We operate out of Hillside High School, Go Hornets, Monday through Thursday from four thirty to seven P.M. Our mission is to inspire, engage, and empower young people to become their full, to reach their full potential through experience, exposure to new experiences, and education. Our website is www.imyouth.org. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Destiny Alexander, the director of POOF. POOF is a double acronym that stands for Planning Our Own Future, Planning Our Own Funeral. We are located in Wellands Village, and I would like to thank the city council for having us. Thank you so much for your support, and as you guys seen this weekend, we had a major shooting in Wellands Village, and so it's very important for the teens to be able to have a safe space, and that's what we do. We are entrepreneurship program.
There are hosts of other organizations that could not be here this evening that also join in partnership with this proclamation. The D.L. Forbes Youth Foundation, Durham Proud Program, One Hundred Black Men of the Triangle East, Bull City Bulldogs, We Are Kings Program, We Are Queens Program, Road to Generation Mentor, My Brothers Keeper Durham Jubilee Home, the National Society of Black Engineers, Research Triangle Professionals, Hey Ty Reborn Justice Movement, Big Brothers Big Sisters of the Triangle, Strong Her Together, Long Ball Program, I Am Me Girls, Boys and Girls Club of Durham and Orange Counties, Salvation Army Boys and Girls Club, Authentic Men Educated and Noble Adolescent Male Leadership and Mentoring Program, Young Male Achievers, Brother to Brother, Fatherhood of Durham, Triangle Literacy Council, and Project Build. So I have to take a personal moment because this is the first time that I've been in this chamber since Mayor O'Neill has become mayor, and I met her when I was in the third grade, and that was particularly inspiring to me because I graduated from law school. It wasn't until I met Mayor O'Neill that I actualized my belief in being able to attend, graduate from, and excel in a legal career. And so I thank you for being that model, but also knowing that so many young men in our community continue to need that support. And so I thank you all so very much for this proclamation and the support you all have for young men and youth in our community. Thank you.
We now turn to our announcements. My heart has been heavy all weekend. After Friday, Thursday, when we had a vigil, talking about gun violence, and then at night we had a shooting, and then on this weekend, we had five young people, five young men shot. So I thank, thank God for a moment from one of, one of my children. Doran and I are both from the West End, and we still attend church together, and he's still very much a part of my life, and I'm just so proud of you, Doran, and all that you have done and continue to do. And I look at Derrick Rhodes, who I had the opportunity to attend his event that he had a couple of months ago, met him for the first time in his mentoring role, and once again, I'm just awestruck by the young men that continue to push forth and to tell us that they know how to help, and they are helping. So to all of you all who are here tonight, that's the one thing that I know that absolutely makes a difference in a person's life is another caring person, another caring adult, a mentor. So we thank you for what you're doing, and I was particularly struck that we start off with you all tonight, and we started off with courage, and I would encourage those who were involved in the shooting over this past week, that you have courage to cooperate with our law enforcement officials to help to bring to justice those who have been responsible. We are all committed on this dais to making Durham a better place to live, work, and play. We don't just say that as an, as an empty, as empty words, but we live it. I'm watching my colleagues live it. I try to live it every day, and we were all heavy with sadness and still are about what happened, but we, nevertheless, there is hope, and there is hope when we have courage to help each other. You gotta be able to see those who are invisible, those who are marginalized and have been marginalized, and we have to give them opportunities to participate fully in life and to give themselves an opportunity to do something different other than pick up a gun and shoot another person. So I encourage those of you who in the Durham community who, who ask what we are doing and how will we do it, we are, we are going to do everything that we can, but I also much ask that you play a part in being a solution and being part of the solution. It takes us all. There is no way these seven folk up here and the two that actually run the day-to-day operations as well as our clerk, there's no way that we can fix all of this, but together as a community, we can, and we should. We can and we should. So I'll come off my soapbox if I can stay there forever, but let us keep those families. For those five young men, there are five different sets of families, and we don't know who the perpetrators were. We do know that they're in stable condition. We're praying that they continue to improve, but there are a lot of hurting people out there tonight and have been, and we've got to do something, and we can't wait for folk to take the guns off the streets. That may never happen. What we have to do is give people the option not having to pick up a gun in the interim while we fight for better gun laws. So are there any other announcements? Councilwoman Freeman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to appreciate you and all those who are here on behalf of mentoring and mentoring in our community. I do want to just, I don't have an announcement, I just want to make sure that I do bring it forward, that I do want to re-figure out what the date would look like for having Hey Ty Reborn Justice Movement come and do a presentation just to share what they've been doing and figure out if we can be a part of that work, whether it's at this work session or the next work session, I do want to figure that out. That's it. Thank you.
Any other announcements? Councilwoman Halsey Hyman.
A good evening and happy and safe New Year. Mentoring is very also important to me also, and so we're not going to just stop this today. The city councils have allowed me to also have a mentoring program honoring mentorship on the nineteenth of January, so we'll be, we'll be honoring, the city council will be honoring mentor programs on the nineteenth. I am respectfully challenging every adult in Durham to do something for Mentoring Month. Let's be real that it should be done throughout the year, but mainly, let's try to do it this month. Tap to, tap into one youth, tap into somebody into your neighborhood. I was talking to some of my family members in New York City earlier. My mom is eighty-eight, and she's still in New York in the South Bronx where I grew up, and I remember the neighborhood raised us. You couldn't get from one end of the block to another end of the block saying, "That's Anna's girls, and you better be a lady," right? We don't do that anymore. We mind our business. We don't sometimes work as a community, and it has to, as the mayor said, we have to do it together. I couldn't sleep the other night. We actually, actually did a visual, reading out forty-two, forty-three names, and then I think two days later, we had the gunshots. I am respectfully, again, challenging every adult to do something for Mentoring Month. Give back, touch somebody in your community, maybe be a little nosy. I'm a social worker, so it's by trade, so sometimes I tell my students, be a little nosy, and go into that community and work with the youth. They are our future. We're not going to be here at one time, in the future, but those are our youth, and we've got to give back, and we've got to stop kind of not like being involved and minding our business, but getting involved. Like I said, I was raised by our community. We have to do that, so I'm really respectfully challenging the adults in this town to please give back and to please mentor these youth. Thank you.
Are there any other announcements? All right, council.
Sorry, I'm dealing with some tech issues, but I did want to take this moment to be a part of this course. I've been talking about this for a long time. The reality is, our law enforcement officers are not going around arresting eight, nine, or ten-year-olds. It's shortly after that age group when we're starting to have this, this culture, this behavior, and I, with my colleague, Councilmember Halsey Hyman, I want to challenge us to also be a little nosy, but more so, in addition to that, if you are a mother, if you are a father, you're a single parent, a grandmother, grandfather, auntie, uncle, or guardian, and you feel as though your young person is starting to perform behaviors that are out of character in which how you raised them, reach out and let somebody know, and I will commit to that. Call me if I need to talk to them, but it's gonna, it's gonna be on all of us to be committed to saving our young people's lives. I am so sick and tired of reactionary news reporting, and I know they're doing their job, but once the system gets involved, it's already a failure. Once the law enforcement is involved, once the news story is happening, we've already failed. In other words, we are failing our youth that we're losing today about five to ten years ago, and we have to get more engaged in our schools and in our neighborhoods. So you need to open your door, have your screen door open, your window open, and you hear something, you need to talk to them. If you're afraid, reach out to someone who you know will. We have to live in this commitment to save our youth. So I wanted to also get on the record to say that. Call me. I'll talk to them. I'll come to your house. That's what we must do. That's what we must do. Now, on a lighter note, I wanted to, and I wish it was on better circumstances. I do want to highlight the fact that my in-laws are here from Zimbabwe. And my mother-in-law, who owns one of the largest textile factories in Zimbabwe, has been an entrepreneur all her life. My wife's really gets it from her. And my father-in-law, who served as general counsel for Nelson Mandela. And my son, who is going back to school tonight at science and math. They are here, and I would love you guys to stand. Welcome to Durham, Mom and Dad. And to answer the question, no, you don't have to stay the whole meeting. But thank you all for being here. And yeah, so we're ready to get to business, but call me. As Deion Sanders said, I'm not hard to find. Thank you.
Okay, everybody, I think we're going to go to the people's business. I do, though, want to issue an apology to, we had a Kwanzaa Festival on yesterday that I was supposed to attend but was unable to do so. And I would like to just apologize to everybody. I know that you all had a great time. Chairwoman Brenda Howard told me that she spoke on behalf of Cedar County. So I just wanted to let you all know that I hope that I'll be able to join you all next year, but I was unable to do so on yesterday. I now turn to our city manager and recognize her for any priority items she may have.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Mayor Protem, and members of the Durham City Council. I do have a couple of updates for you this evening. Agenda item number nine, which is a zoning map change, Welcome Venture Park Attachment E Development Plan, was revised to reflect the phased development described in the Utility Extension Agreement. And agenda item number 10, zoning map change, Aura Hillendale West Attachment D Development Plan was revised to reflect additional proffers made by the applicant. And Attachment F, zoning map change report, was revised to reflect additional proffers made by the applicant. That is all I have this evening.
Thank you, City Manager Paige. I now turn to Senator Turner Rayburg to see if she has any priority items.
Good evening, Mayor O'Neill, Mayor Protem Middleton, and members of the city council. It's good to see you. Happy New Year. The city attorney's office has no priority items tonight.
Thank you, Attorney Rayburg. I now turn to our city clerk to see if she has any priority items for tonight.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Mayor Protem, and council members. The city clerk's office has no priority items this evening, and Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Thank you so much. The next order of business is our consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of items that the council has previously considered in a work session. Mayor Protem, I'll just verify. We have already taken care of Councilwoman Caballero's excuse absence, correct?
Okay. Thank you, Madam.
All right. All right, let me just start again in that paragraph. The next order of business is the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of items that the council has previously considered in a work session. All items on the consent agenda may be approved by a single vote of the council. Items may be removed from the consent agenda by a council member or a member of the public. And those items will be considered separately at the end of the meeting tonight. I'm going to read for your hearing the consent agenda as well as the entire agenda for tonight's meeting, beginning with item number one, the Durham Open Space and Trails Commission appointment. Item two is the Mayor's Hispanic Latino Committee Appointment. Item three, November 2022 Bid Report. Number four, Permit Fee Reimbursement Program Housing Construction for Disabled Veterans. Five, American Rescue Plan Act ARPA Project Multifamily Acquisition Support and Supply Mass. Item six is the Lease and License Agreement with New Singular Wireless PCS LLC at 1318 East Pettigrew Street. Item seven is the contract with John R. McAdams Company, Inc., doing business as McAdams to develop a Durham Parks and Recreation Park System Plan. And then we will turn to our general business agenda, public hearings. Number nine will be led by Councilwoman Williams, which is the zoning map change for Welcome Venture Park. Item 10 will be led by Councilwoman Gillian Johnson, which is the zoning map change Aura Hillendale West. Item 11 will be led by Mayor Protem, which is the zoning map change for Chapel Hill Road C Store. Now we will move to Councilwoman Williams. Oh, that's right, we do have to take a vote. Thank you. We need to take a vote on our consent agenda. And we're going to have to do a hand vote tonight. So I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. A move.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilwoman Freeman, seconded by Councilwoman Williams. All those in favor, if you raise your left hand. All those opposed have the same right, seen none, it passes unanimously, except for Councilwoman Johnson. So she is in affirmative vote. All right, okay. I'll turn it over to you, Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, colleagues. We have before us, we have before us item number nine, zoning map change for Welcome Venture Park. And we will welcome our staff. Hey there.
Good evening and Happy New Year. I'm going to switch to this side. Mayor O'Neill, Mayor Protem Middleton, and honorable council members. Good evening, I am Brooke Roper with the Planning Department, and I am happy to be here with you tonight. Before I begin, staff would like to state for the record that all Planning Department hearing items have been advertised and noticed in accordance with the state and local law. And affidavits of all notices are on file in the Planning Department. A request for a utility extension agreement, voluntary annexation, and initial zoning map change has been received from Welcome Wilson Jr. of the Welcome Group for three parcels of land totaling 157.37 acres and located at Hamlin Road, sorry, at Hamlin and Old Oxford Roads. This annexation petition is not contiguous to primary corporate limits. The applicant is proposing to annex and rezone the properties to facilitate the construction of up to 1.3 million square feet of industrial space. The current zoning is industrial light. The applicant proposes to change this designation to industrial light with a development plan. The request, Case Z2204, received a recommendation of approval from the Planning Commission on October 11, 2022, by a vote of 11 to 0. The properties are currently designated industrial on the future land use map. The proposed industrial light with a development plan zoning is consistent with the designated future land use. As a reminder, three motions are required for this application. The first is to adopt an ordinance annexing the property and entering into a utility extension agreement. The second is to approve the zoning ordinance. And the third is to approve the consistency statement. Thank you. Staff and the applicant are available to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. All right, we've heard the staff report. And I'm now going to declare this public hearing is open. First, are there any questions, colleagues, from our staff? From the council? Yes, Mayor Protem Middleton.
Councilmember Williams, thank you. As is my custom, there's no legal reason or prohibition for me participating in this discussion. But I do always like to disclose that the organization of which I'm a principal is a major landowner within the notification area for this case. Again, no financial or anything, but I do like to disclose that before I engage in conversation on the case. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other questions or comments? All right, so we have declared, we're going to declare this public hearing open. And we will have our applicant come before us. I have three, four, and the rest are against. Three against. All right, good evening, Mr. Biker.
Evening.
All right, we'll take some time to hear from you. And how much time do you think you need?
Actually, be very brief tonight. Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council, Patrick Biker with Morningstar Law Group, representing the Welcome Group. Our team has been working diligently with the Bragtown Community Association and other residents along Oxford and Hamlin Roads. We found out this evening that they wish to see more specificity and written commitments in regard to third-party obligations that relate to bus stops and job training. We would respectfully ask for this public hearing to be continued to a date certain. That date certain being February 6, so we can work on a memorandum of understanding with the Bragtown Community Association. We do have economic development prospects evaluating this site, and therefore, we are respectfully asking for 30 days continuance of this item. Again, we did have a unanimous recommendation for approval from the Planning Commission. This is really a game changer for a section of Durham that needs good-paying jobs. And in order to make sure that we're bringing you a project that the community fully supports, we respectfully ask for this public hearing to be held open until February 6 of 2023. I'll be happy to answer any questions. I do want to emphasize, our team has been working diligently with Durham County, NC DOT, Durham Tech, GO Triangle, all the players necessary to put in the community infrastructure that will make this project as successful as possible. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Biker. Colleagues, staff. Colleagues, are we okay with the continuance?
I do have a question.
You have a question?
Yes.
Mayor Protem.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Biker. Good to see you. Happy New Year.
Yes.
A bit of an interesting request, particularly when you landed a unanimous approval from the Planning Commission. Could you give us a sense, and I'm only asking this because of the workload that the council deals with in terms of these cases?
I appreciate that, sir.
Absolutely. No, could you give us a sense of, do you anticipate, what kind of substantive impact do you, and by substantive, I mean actual, you know, planks, do you anticipate, if any, from extending this or keeping the hearing open? I'm just curious, what do you anticipate happening between that and?
It's funny, Mayor Protem. Some of you all may recall, I was chairman of the Durham Area Transit Authority for a number of years, and I never viewed installing bus shelters as a particularly difficult undertaking. Well, I was wrong about that. Trying to get agreement from NC DOT, Durham County, and GO Triangle on how to install a bus shelter specifically at the Bragtown Library or at other locations, you have to get a number of sign-offs. And it's proven to take longer than we thought it would, since it's not been specifically listed as a tax commitment on our development plan, which it cannot be. It can't be, because it's third parties. The Welcome Group does not control. The neighborhood has asked us for a deferral in order for us to work further on this. And we may come back on February 6, but I think we'll have better definition by that time, and we'll certainly have everything specified in terms of what the action steps are going to be. But again, perhaps it's a reflection of the fact I've been doing this for too long. We used to have numerous rezonings approved that had committed elements or tax commitments that obligated a third party to do something. The city council approved it, but that third party was not in the room. And then the third party said, "Well, wait a minute, I never agreed to that." Well, then guess what? You have to rezone the property then, because you can't fulfill your tax commitment. And so that's the predicament we're in right now, Mayor Protem. I wish it were different. But again, as you know, from the Carver Street assemblage and other developments, we've spent a lot of time in Bragtown. We're very thankful for those relationships. But we need to work more on that to make sure that we've done everything we can to put forward the best project we can.
I appreciate that. And I'm always sensitive to any precedent we might be establishing as a council, either deliberately, consciously, or by implication, or?
Of course.
Maybe this question, and the attorney might want to weigh in. If we were to approve this tonight, would it preclude any of the things you're talking about happening, still happening?
No, sir. No, I'm happy to. I'm happy to put this in writing in a memorandum of understanding after the annexation and the annexation, utility extension agreement, and rezoning is approved. But I appreciate the concerns of the neighborhood. It's a neighborhood that's had promises made decades ago that did not come true. And we want to be sensitive to that.
You're not going to get much argument from me from trying to do what people and neighborhoods want. But I just wanted to understand, is this theater, or is it substantive? And I don't mean that in a pejorative sense.
No, I appreciate it.
But, okay, I'm good with it, my colleagues are.
I mean, I would like to think that the memorandum of understanding would be like one page long. We're not talking about a lengthy document here, but something that would specify the action steps that we'll take as the project moves forward. But again, when you're working with so many different parties in order to obtain the necessary entitlements just to build a bus stop.
Right.
Just to build a bus stop. It's taken a long time, and I can't tell you. Randy Warren has done, our lead consultant, Earl Llewellyn, had a lot of time talking to those entities, and we still don't have resolution on how to design a bus stop.
Got you. Thank you so much for that. Thank you, Madam, Councilmember Williams.
Thank you. And colleagues, thank you all for indulging in this. Mr. Biker, I understand, staff, we have already six cases on that date.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I didn't know that.
We have six cases on the February 6 date, but we could accommodate that if needed. February 20 has only three cases, which might be a good option as well if the applicant is open to that.
We can live with February 20.
Yeah, I'd like to take the mic part out. It'll be a much better option. Colleagues, would you all be okay with that? February 20? All right, thank you. So we will leave the, we'll leave the public hearing open until that date.
February 20. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam Mayor.
Great job, Councilwoman Williams. I'll pass it to Councilwoman Johnson.
I love the distributive leadership.
Yes, I do, too. Works for me.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our next item is item 10, zoning map change Aura Hillendale West. And I will turn it over to staff for our staff report.
Thank you, Mayor O'Neill, Mayor Protem Middleton, and honorable city council members. Good evening, I'm Brooke Roper with the Planning Department. Happy to be here with you tonight. A request for zoning map change has been received from Ryan Stewart of Tragic Residential Group for one parcel of land totaling 6.548 acres and located at 3428 Hillsborough Road. The current zoning is industrial light. The applicant proposes to change this designation to Plan Development Residential 59.102. The applicant is proposing to rezone the properties to facilitate the construction of up to 387 multifamily units. The properties are currently designated industrial and recreation and open space on the future land use map. The proposed Plan Development Residential 59.102 zoning is inconsistent with the designated future land use. If the proposed zoning is approved, staff recommends a change to the flum to designate the property as high-density residential and also recreation and open space. The Planning Commission recommended approval by a vote of 11 to 0 at their October 11, 2022, meeting. As a reminder, three motions are required for this application. The first is to adopt an ordinance entering into a utility extension agreement. The second is to approve the zoning ordinance. And the third is to approve the consistency statement. Thank you, and staff and the applicant are available for any questions.
Thank you so much. We've received our staff report, and I will now declare the public hearing open. Are there any questions for staff from members of the council? All right, seeing no questions, we will move to our speakers. We have seven people signed up to speak on this item. All of them are proponents. So I'm just going to give everyone three minutes. But if the applicant needs more time, just let us know.
Good evening, Mayor O'Neill, Mayor Protem Middleton. Good evening, Mayor O'Neal, Mayor Pro Tem Middleton, members of the city council. If I may, Brooke, if we could bring up a PowerPoint, then I'll get started, and hopefully I can get done in less than three minutes, Councilmember Johnson. And I think the rest of our team simply signed up to be able to answer questions, if there are any. Great, thank you, appreciate it. Good evening again, Mayor Pro, Mayor O'Neal, Mayor Pro Tem Middleton, members of council. My name is Patrick Biker, I live at 2614 Stewart Drive. I'm an attorney with Morningstar Law Group, and I'm here tonight representing Trinsec Residential Group. With me tonight are Ryan Stewart and Justin Brown with Trinsec, as well as our land planning leader, Dan Jewell, who is the regional director for Thomason Hutton. At the outset, I want to stress that we have had strong community engagement regarding this, the redevelopment of this six-and-a-half acre site. The site currently is owned industrial light with no development plan, and it contains an abandoned building. Should be working, there is. Contains an abandoned building that was built 49 years ago, back in 1973. During the past several months, our team has met both with residents who live along the other side of LaSalle Street, as well as various representatives of the Watts Hospital Hillendale Neighborhood Association. I think it is fair to say, we've reached substantial agreement on all major aspects of the development plan before the council tonight, and to that end, we recently added tax commitments 6 through 10, and I will summarize those briefly. We submitted these to the planning department a couple of weeks ago, and we can do any necessary final wordsmithing on them tomorrow, but just to read them briefly into the record, item 6, sorry, this is way too small. Item 6, any portion of the apartment building facing LaSalle Street shall be no longer than 150 feet without a break in the wall, that's at least 75 feet deep and at least 45 feet wide. Number 7 is 65% of the total outward faces of the building will be, will be brick. Number 8 is outdoor lighting will be the lowest wattage and lowest degree Kelvin to meet applicable standards. Oh, wow, that helps. Pool, number 9, pool hours shall be no earlier than 8:00 a.m. and no later than 10:00 p.m. And lastly, number 10, the public access area, which we're referring to as a park, shall include walkways and planted areas with canopy and understory trees to achieve a 0.6 opacity, and the plantings will include no fewer than 12 canopy trees that are projected to grow at least 60 feet tall. And so again, I want to thank the planning department for looking at that over the last couple of days and working with us on that wording. Perhaps the only item of disagreement remaining is the existing pine trees along the west side of LaSalle Street towards Spron Avenue. Our understanding is that the sidewalk is, the city is undertaking new sidewalk construction along this side of LaSalle, and that sidewalk construction will remove these pine trees anyway. Of course, our team is very enthusiastic to bring forward an infill redevelopment with income-restricted housing that Trinsec will provide with no city subsidy. Besides there being no city subsidy, it is vital to highlight that in regard to the onsite amenities and the quality of interior construction, all of these income-restricted units will be completely indistinguishable from Trinsec's market rate units. In addition, these income-restricted units will be floating throughout the building and not confined to one level or one section. Without a doubt, this type of income-restricted housing is very expensive to provide. In addition to the income-restricted housing, we have committed to a large park area along LaSalle Street. This park will be open to the public and will be a great neighborhood amenity, especially compared to the sea of asphalt that's there today. The staff report did a great job highlighting all the community benefits associated with our development, and in closing, one community benefit that I wish to highlight is that there is transit service near to this site with Go Durham Route 11, and that bus route provides a direct five-minute commute to Duke Hospital, our community's largest employer. For all those reasons, we respectfully ask for your approval tonight. Our team will be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Biker. Our next speaker is Dan Jewell, if you are here for speaking and not for questions.
Councilman Johnson, I'm simply here to answer questions if needed. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Jewell. Our next speaker is Julie Mancuso-Craig. Welcome, please state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Good evening and Happy New Year. My name is Julie Mancuso-Craig. I reside at 1510 Mountain View Avenue, approximately one block from the proposed development. I have the honor of serving on the board of the Watts Hospital Hillendale Neighborhood Association. In addition, we have formed a smaller committee of neighbors located close to the proposed development to be able to provide input and feedback to Trinsec Development Group. We have met more than a half dozen times over the last two years as a committee with Trinsec Development Group, so I'm representing both myself, my family, my neighbors, and the Watts Hillendale Association. The property, as you have seen in its current state, is quite an eyesore. It has not only led, it's, the lack of vacancy has led to loitering, vandalism, and frequently car meetups have utilized the parking lot over the last years, and especially during COVID. The neighbors would like nothing more to see this development developed into a promising asset to the community. As with any new, particularly large and high-density development in our community, the neighbors are rightfully concerned about the impact on their quality of life, on the value and impact to their property, as well as short-term and long-term environmental concerns. Through the committee's engagement with Trinsec, we have sought to discuss matters of most importance and our top priorities with them. We've collaborated towards mutually agreeable resolutions, and we believe we will hopefully see results come into a favorable outcome for the neighbors and the larger community. We hope that our engagement and collaborative relationship with Trinsec Group will help to mitigate any overarching concerns by our neighbors most impacted. As you can imagine, a particular concern and ongoing concern is local traffic. Most neighbors have cited extreme concern over the conditions currently. This is even pre-development. There's difficulty entering onto and exiting from Hillsborough Road, as well as speeding vehicles that utilize LaSalle Street and Spron Avenue, often as a cut-through. Consequently, you can only imagine, it is with bated breath, we hope that both the city, the developers, and the neighborhood can prioritize working together to mitigate even worse traffic conditions as the development hopefully moves forward. The committee has found an open dialogue transparency and considerable time and consideration provided by Trinsec. We are very grateful for that. Our engagement has helped inform the additional comments that you have seen articulated in their development agreement, and as such, the neighborhood committee would like to register our support for the development of the Aura Hillendale West through the Trinsec Residential Group. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to address the council.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dot Doyle. No worries, welcome. Please state your name and address, and you also have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Dot Doyle. I live at 2311 Woodrow Street. I am vice president of the Watts Hospital Hillendale Neighborhood Association, and I have also served on the committee that worked with Trinsec in their, working on their development plan. The board, as is typical of our process, when there is a pressing issue in the neighborhood to form an ad hoc committee, Julie was one of the members of that. Most of our committee members were people who lived within a block of, of the development. I don't, I live on the other side of Hillendale Road, but, but I do think that it was important that we heard mostly from people who would be very directly impacted by this. We met a number of times, as Julie said, with Trinsec. We also met a number of times as a smaller committee, and we met also with, we papered the, the houses near us, near, in the 45, the 45 homes near that, that development, to give those people a particular opportunity to ask questions and, and for them to give us inputs that we felt like we were getting input from all of the nearby neighbors, not just the smaller group. You know, as, as the case, as you might expect, we didn't get everything from the developer that we would like to have, and I, but I feel fairly certain they gave us some things that, that they didn't originally have on their, on their agenda, but I think, I think we've got a good, a good project coming here, and as a result, we are happy to support the plan that Mr. Biker has presented to you tonight. Our president, Fred Peterson, sent a letter to you all, and just in case you didn't get it, I did bring a hard copy, so I can leave that with the clerk if, if, if that's appropriate.
Yes, that'd be fine.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker will be Karen Kanter. Welcome, please state your name and address, and you will have three minutes.
Sure, thank you. Good evening and Happy New Year. I am Karen Kanter. I live at 1515 Mountain View, which is around the corner from the new development, and I am here to advocate for keeping the existing trees on the property. Interesting fact, while 60-foot trees are promised to have maturity, how long will we have to wait until that happens? Just think about it, if an eight-foot ceiling grows at a rate of a foot a year, we're looking at 52 years for these trees to reach its full height. My grandchildren will be in retirement at that point. Suppose it takes only half that time to reach maturity, and I've exaggerated, that's still 25 years away. It seems very unnecessary to wait so long when the existing trees are already in place and quite thriving. So why do I care about this? Sure, trees are very lovely to look at, and they provide habitat for birds and squirrels, but they also have many other benefits. Did you know that trees can reduce energy costs by providing shade in the summer and wind protection in the winter? A little fact, Leaf and Limb claims a 25-foot tree reduces annual heating and cooling costs of a typical residence by 8 to 12%. Okay, we're talking about an apartment building, not a residence, but you get the picture. And add to these benefits that trees emit oxygen, fully grown trees, filter our water, act as a sound barrier, and consume greenhouse gases. Plus, trees provide an eye-pleasing visual barrier for the residents looking out and the neighbors in the immediate area. Indeed, trees are a bomb to the human spirit. Newly planted saplings will take more than a generation to produce the benefits of the existing trees. For me, it makes no sense to cut down those trees that are already there and thriving, and I thank you, everybody, for listening to this plea for the trees.
Thank you for being here. Our next speaker is Guy Kanter. No last name. Welcome, please state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, I guess I could be Guy Kanter, but I'm Guy Mayer. I do live also at 1515 Mountain View Avenue. We're in direct view of the, of the proposed building, unlike some of the others here. I think someone's put up some pictures that I, that I had, so I, I appreciate that. These are the trees along Hillendale. It's always been a disappointment to Karen and I that, that the city and public works people and the builder never talked about combining sidewalks, because we're going to have two parallel sidewalks that really duplicate the Heath Island effect and, and call for the elimination of these 60 trees along LaSalle. So that's why in my written comments, I asked for some encouragement by the council, maybe adding it to the proffered list that was submitted. To enter in conversation here underneath the, the scrolling of my voice there is the, is LaSalle Street. You can see the two brown sidewalks are what is proposed, and I'm suggesting one sidewalk where the orange is, that could go on the other side of these trees and retain the trees and make a lot more open space than, than is called for currently. My first request was at the top of the screen, that's the canopy on the western and southern border, all these trees, I think there's 17 of them, are right near the border, they don't interfere with construction at all, they provide a buffer between the proposed development and the two-star hotels on the other side, and it'll be even, even a more valuable buffer if that property is sold and a larger, larger development is put in. So that's why I was keenly interested in making sure those on the, at the top of the screen could be retained, and some energetic conversation between the city and the builder about combining sidewalks and, and preserve the trees at the bottom. So that was two separate requests. I would have made that as part of the neighborhood committee, but unfortunately, even though we look at the thing, as you'll see on the next, next picture, I think, well, those are the trees on the, on the western buffer, so I think next is the, that's our sightline looking from our dining room to the building. The trees are the only thing blocking the view of the building to us. It's really very selfish of us to be advocating for that, just so we don't have the building occupants looking at us quite so avidly, or vice versa. They provide privacy along with everything else that Karen mentioned. I think the next one would have the, the look at, that's, that's how it looks out our dining room window, the yellow line is the current building, the red line is about where the top of the apartments would be, and the orange is where the pine trees are projected to be cut down, because the city and the builder haven't yet combined efforts to make one sidewalk instead of two.
Sir, I'm sorry to cut you off, but your time is up.
Okay, can I get just to the end?
You can have one more minute.
Okay, thank you. There's one more at the end that showed something, yeah, that's the vision of the, that the builder showed us, and that's a, a wide sidewalk that meanders a lot of concrete by benches, and if you can imagine that, plus a side, a sidewalk parallel to the curb, that is what we are going to be looking at if the city and the developer don't talk about combining sidewalks, it's going to be more concrete than, than grass, and 12 baby trees instead of 60 mature trees. So, is there one more? Don't want to go over my minute? Yeah, that's the projected, I'll look at with the 12 baby trees going in, and one more, I won't abuse my time. And those, those are what I think is really important, valuable to incoming residents. If I lived on the fifth story of an apartment, I'd rather look out my window and see a tree than see houses across the way. Please have the courage to add some language to encourage tree preservation. Trees make for safer communities, and they, they, they're proven a lower crime, so thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Fred Peterson. You're, you wave? Okay, thank you, everyone. All these folks signed up as proponents, so there's not really a rebuttal, but Mr. Biker, if you wanted to address any of the comments that folks made, that would be great.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson, thank you, members of council. We have no replies to the comments that were made. We certainly do appreciate the support from the Watts Hillendale, Watts Hospital Hillendale Neighborhood Association, and we appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present who would like to speak on this item?
I do have one question for Attorney Biker. Have you all considered keeping those trees?
We've looked at it, it's really not feasible on this site with this project. Again, the city's sidewalk proposal, our sidewalk construction along LaSalle impacts that, and then secondly, it's, because they're pine trees, they don't have any screening at the ground level, because they're pine trees, and so accordingly, it's going to be a much more appealing park to have a variety of trees, and that's exactly what we agreed to with the Neighborhood Association.
Thank you. Anyone present who would like to speak on this item before we close the public hearing? Madam Clerk, do we have anyone online? Madam Clerk, do we have anyone online? All right, seeing none, I'll declare this public hearing closed. The matter is back before the council. Comments, questions, or thoughts from councilmembers? Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you. I just wanted to check with staff about the sidewalk and whether there was some conversation about combining it. And I do want to appreciate the plea for the trees. I know it's not as high as a priority, but it is a priority for our community, and I do want to make sure that if it's possible to figure out this sidewalk combination so that it's not two parallel sidewalks, that would be great.
Bill Judge, Assistant Transportation Director. There is a city-funded sidewalk project to construct a sidewalk adjacent to this parcel along LaSalle. That project's currently in right-of-way acquisition. To be honest with you, tonight is the first I've heard of the concern of the trees, and I don't know whether or not that sidewalk project was proposing to remove the trees or whether they were going to build the sidewalk between the trees in the back of curb, something I can follow up with on our Public Works Department. But I don't know if anybody from the applicant has -- yeah, is familiar with that project or the details of it can speak more.
Councilman Freeman. Dan Jewell, Thomason Hutton, reside at 1025 Gloria Avenue. We actually have copies of the plans that have been done by the city showing where that sidewalk will go. We've overlaid those plans on our existing additions site survey plan, and as Mr. Biker said, 90% of those trees will either be removed or their root zones profoundly compromised through the construction of the sidewalk as drawn. And just to be clear, if there are a few trees that aren't compromised by the sidewalk construction, there's no reason that we need to take those out if they end up in the park. So thank you.
That's great. I just want to follow up and just ask, because just acknowledging that, I mean, we're talking a lot of infrastructure. There's lots of conversations about sidewalks. Is there a process to review, I guess, whatever plans that are coming forward as we're doing cases like this, so that we're not doing double sidewalks?
Yeah. So there -- I don't believe there will be double sidewalks. There's either requirement, unless it's some sort of internal sidewalk serving the neighborhood. There'll be one public sidewalk. I think the question is, how extensive is the impact going to be to the trees and whether or not those can be saved? Or typically, on the city's projects, we try to avoid tree removal to the extent possible. They work pretty closely with General Services or Forestry Division. There are treatments that they can do to minimize impacts to roots when constructing the new sidewalk, but some of it also has to do sometimes with the long-term health of the tree or overall health and age. If these are trees that our Forestry Division has concerns about their long-term health or, yeah, that their at maturity or likely to fail soon in a storm or other types of things, and that weighs in as well sometimes, they'll be removed just because of -- or not just because of that, but that'll be taken into consideration, I guess.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I definitely understand, you know, a mature tree can also cause a lot of damage to a house or a property. And so I do think that between the applicant and our staff, especially in urban forestry, if there could be some additional conversations, just to make sure if there are some of the younger trees that could be preserved, I think some of the elders can be harvested and put to use and not just torn down. But other than that, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from members of the council? Sure, Councilmember Hyman.
So I think I read in the comments that there were like going to be two -- excuse me, two and three-bedroom apartments. Is that correct?
The ones and twos.
Ones and twos?
Yeah. Yes.
And it's 387 units or maximum?
Yeah, that's correct.
And I'm sure you have already discussed the situation in terms of the federal and state regs for people with disabilities, but I always like to bring that up. Can you just speak to, like, have you -- what are the plan in terms of anything, and special besides just the federal-state regulations for people?
It'll follow the standard ADA regulations that are required of every new community to meet that accessibility requirement. Trinsec is a very well-regarded national leader in the multifamily development business, and so they build communities that are excellent in terms of accessibility of all the rooms, all the amenities, all the parking, and so forth. So I lose sleep over a lot of things, but the accessibility in this proposal is not one of them.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Any other questions or comments from councilmembers? All right. Seeing none, we need three motions to approve this item. The first is a motion to authorize the city manager to enter into utility extension agreement with Trinsec Acquisition Company LLC.
So move.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please -- I'm sorry. Moved by Councilmember Williams, seconded by Mayor O'Neill. Madam Clerk, would you please open the vote?
Everybody's -- like, remote's working.
Not sustaining. Mine isn't, but we'll see.
All right, we'll try it.
Oh, there it is.
All right. Motion passes unanimously.
Correct.
Our second motion is to adopt an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance by taking property out of the industrial light IL and establishing the same as Planned Development Residential 59.102, PDR 59.102.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Williams, seconded by Councilmember Hyman. Madam Clerk, would you please open the vote? Please close the vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And our final motion is to adopt a consistency statement as required by NCGS 160D-605.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Williams, seconded by Mayor O'Neill. Madam Clerk, please open the vote. Please close the vote. And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone, and I will pass the mic to our next -- we'll pass it back to the mayor to pass it to our next person.
May I approach you?
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you, Your Honor. We now turn to our last published item of the evening, item number 11, zoning map change, Chapel Hill Road Convenience Store. This is a public hearing. At this time, I'll ask for the staff to report.
Thank you. Mayor O'Neill, Mayor Protem Middleton, and Honorable Councilmembers, good evening. Brooke Roper with the Planning Department. Happy to be here with you tonight. A request for a zoning map change has been received from Chris Rukowski of TMT LA Associates for two parcels of land totaling 0.2 acres and located at 2945 Chapel Hill Road and 3036 University Drive. The current zoning is residential suburban eight and residential suburban 10. The applicant proposes to change this designation to commercial neighborhood with a text-only development plan. The applicant is proposing to rezone the properties to facilitate the reconstruction of the existing convenience store. The properties are currently designated low-density residential on the future land use map. This proposed commercial neighborhood with a text-only development plan zoning is inconsistent with the designated future land use. If the proposed zoning is approved, staff recommends a change to the flum to designate the property as commercial. As a reminder, two motions are required for this application. The first motion is to approve the zoning ordinance. The second motion is to approve the consistency statement. Thank you, and staff and the applicant are available for any questions.
Thank you so much for your report. I'm going to declare this public hearing open, but before I turn to members of the public, I'm going to yield to my honorable colleagues to see if there are any questions or comments. All right, with that, is the applicant here? Good evening. Happy New Year to you. How much time do you anticipate needed?
Not much time. Three minutes is plenty.
Put five minutes on the clock, please.
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, and members of City Council. My name is Chris Rukowski with TMT LA Associates, 5011 South Park Drive, Durham. Here representing the property owners for 2945 Chapel Hill Road and 3036 University Drive, along with Patrick Biker from the Morningstar Law Group. Tonight, we're just requesting the rezoning for two parcels that are approximately one-tenth of an acre each, from RS8 and RS10 to neighborhood commercial, restricting the use to convenience store with gasoline sales. The purpose of the rezoning is just simply to be able to redevelop and expand the existing 1,400-square-foot convenience store to an approximately 3,200-square-foot store, as well as that will allow us to provide a landscape buffer and masonry wall between the back of the store and the neighboring residences that exist next door to these two vacant lots. So we hope you can support our quest -- a request to reinvest and expand the existing business that's worked in this area for decades. That's really all I have. Thank you for your time. Answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Madam Clerk, I've received no cards for either proponents or opponents. Just want to verify that we don't have anyone scheduled to speak?
We do not have any.
Anyone online?
No, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the chamber who wishes to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'm going to declare this public hearing closed. The matter is now back before the council. I'm going to yield to my honorable colleagues for any questions or comments they may have. Seeing none, this item requires two motions. The first motion, which I'll entertain, is to adopt an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance by taking property out of the residential suburban eight, RS8, and residential suburban 10, RS10 districts, and establishing the same as commercial neighborhood with a text-only development plan.
Move.
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilmember Williams and a second by her honor of the mayor. Madam Clerk, would you please open the vote? Please close the vote and report.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Motion number two is to adopt a consistency statement as required by NCGS 160D-605.
Move.
Second.
Heard a motion from Councilmember Williams and a second from Councilmember Hyman. Madam Clerk, would you please open the vote? Please close the vote and report out.
The second motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. I yield back to the mayor.
All right. That will conclude our public hearings for tonight. Are there any other matters that come before the council? Councilwoman Friedman.
Just making sure to get a thumbs up for a presentation on the January 19th agenda for Hey Ty Reborn Justice Movement.
Question. Question. Have you -- have you -- have they -- do we know they're going to be ready on that date?
They are. They have already presented to the county. They're just doing the same presentation for the city.
I understand that, but are they okay with that date? Is that a date they can make it?
Yes.
Okay.
Quick question as well. Is this just an interest presentation about the work that they're doing, or are they specifically asking us to, again, intervene with the Durham Housing Authority's contracting decision at Fayette Place?
This is the work that they've been doing with the formerly incarcerated folks in the community?
Okay, so it's not about Fayette Place. Okay, thanks.
Thumbs up on town. All right. All right. I think that that concludes our first meeting of January 2023 at 8:22. Can you believe that? Y'all better relish this moment. I'd like to thank my colleagues again tonight for helping me preside over this meeting. We'll continue in this vein from here on out. As long as I'm mayor, they will be helping, unless they choose otherwise. Okay? So remember, it's Courage Month. Again, I ask you all to keep all those who are -- who have been affected by these shootings, keep them lifted, and also I'll disclose with a quote from Benita Green, one of our longtime Durham residents. On her email, she always says, "Be a kind human being." So be a kind human being to somebody. Have a good night, everybody. 8:23. Bullshit is strong. We are adjourned. Yay!